Welcome, thank you for coming, that's great. Also, I just wanted to congratulate, even though they're not here, we'll be more formal about this next time, congratulate the newly-elected and the elderly-elected. Gary Tenenbaum is here.
I'm oldly.
And lastly, just to remind us the staff and council to please ask for the floor before speaking, that would be awesome. So our first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. If anybody has questions about anything on the consent agenda, please bring them up now, or else you can have a motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor? These microphones sound like they're really working tonight. It's like echoey almost.
You've got the handle on it.
It's wonderful, okay. Our next item is just a call to the public, for anybody who has comments regarding Basalt, we love to try to elicit positive comments about living in Basalt and anything to do with Basalt, but if you just have any comments at all that are not related to items that are on the agenda, please feel free to come up to the mic and tell us your comments. Anybody? What about you? Don't you have a positive comment about Basalt?
I do.
Okay, no one? Put it on the spot, right?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, good evening. As all of you know, over the past several years, I have been one of those who stood here before you and asked for you to add some sort of audio addition, and I just wanted to say thank you, sitting out in the audience and being able to hear everybody clearly without straining certainly means not only a lot to somebody like me who has good hearing, but to those who struggle with hearing impairment, so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Bennett, that was a good one. Anybody else in the public have anything? Already. Our next item is mayor and council reports and comments. Anybody?
I wanted to really thank all the candidates who put their name in the hat for Basalt Town Council, and I really appreciate how positive the election was. It was really refreshing to see, it was a very positive campaign, everyone kept their message to the issues, and really was positive to the point where, at the end, you know, people were sharing beers and really appreciating everybody else's positivity, so it's a good step forward, and hopefully we can continue that as the town moves forward.
Thank you, Gary. Others?
Okay, and then, kind of along those lines, I would like to give a special thanks to our town clerk, Pam Shering, I guess she's back there somewhere, as well as our election judges. This is a mighty stressful time, even when the election goes smoothly and pretty easily like it did, Pam starts working on the election weeks in advance and the election judges commence, yes, in advance, and also the election judges have a super, super long day on election day and training prior to that, and they do that all for, I believe, free. Yes, so thanks to those folks.
They paid.
A dollar, right? Or something like that. And secondly, I want to also share that I was part of library board interviews with George Newman from Pickens County and Kathy Chandler Henry from Edel County and Basalt, and we interviewed nine of the most talented people that I ever saw in my life, and we had to name three to be appointed, but I just want to thank all the people who threw their hat in to run for the library board, because, you know, sometimes you think libraries are a thing of the past, clearly not, because it was all ages of applicants, and it was a really nice couple hours to spend with folks that were interested in that.
Mayor's report. Ryan, do you have anything for us?
I do, thank you very much. A couple quick updates for you, so as you recall, we had filed an objection with the Forest Service over the project they were going to be doing up the frying pan. Myself and Sarah and Susan attended a meeting at the Forest Service Building in Glenwood, where all of the objectors were present and basically voiced the objections. Forest Service has since taken that information and trying to cut a deal, so to speak. So I did get a call from the Forest Service, and they had, you know, read the contents of our recent objection letter, and more or less landed on that they would not be able to confine the times of the day that the trucks would come through here, but they would limit the time of the contract to two years. So if we had said, and so I asked, what happens if we say no? Then the answer to that is that they'll go with the original five-year term for the contract. So we did get some of what we wanted, not all, but the fear for them was essentially that if they limited it too much, it would be a no-bid on the project, and that wasn't an option for them. So I was going to go ahead and just answer them that yes, we'll drop the objection, you know, and go ahead and take that stipulation, and that's sort of the end of our options before they get to their final decision.
So is that it, or are you asking for input on that?
That's it, I mean, I had penned the letter, you know, it came from me, you all approved it, so unless there's, you know, if, you know, we have two options left to us, is either to drop the objection or to accept, you know, I think we get a better deal with the acceptance.
Thanks, Ryan.
Sure.
That's all we really needed to get done on this thing. Anybody have any comments on that?
Okay, a couple others, so we closed the bid process for accepting proposals for attorney, the town attorney position, so we did receive three applications, all of whom are attorneys and firms here within the valley, and three very qualified applications, and so trying to figure out timing on that, I presume that we'd want to wait until the 24th at least to review them, we would have the new council seated at that time, but I didn't want to delay too much. Pam and I discussed, the next meeting is sort of filling up, but we didn't want to overwhelm the next meeting, because that will be the first for our two new folks, so I might propose an alternative, and we don't necessarily need to decide that tonight, but either a quick one-hour meeting off Tuesday, just to come in and look at them, I can certainly give you the stuff in advance with a memo, so you'll be, you know, versed in what our options are, so just, you know, I'll...
Maybe we could work through that outside this venue?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And a quick heads up that Forest Seasons, who does a lot of our lawn mowing and gardening and that sort of thing, we're going to have them start a week early, their normal contract is May 1st, it looks like the grass is starting to come up a bit and, you know, flowers are blooming, so I gave them the go-ahead, got a price from them for that, which was reasonable, to start a week early. They were out here already this week, cleaning up some of the flower beds and putting down for some of the amendments to the soil, so, you know, we'll get started on that in earnest, and we're in the process of hiring some of our seasonal folks, both for the pool and for landscaping, so we'll be in full swing in the near future. Another quick update for you is with the big rains that we got on Saturday, the river park had some fairly minor erosion damage done to it, and I think we found the culprit for that, so Public Works is going to put in a somewhat temporary fix on that, but one that should keep our trails and grass and the kids' play area in good shape, and, you know, I have a feeling that if the CDC parcel goes through and there's some development on that in the future, that could, again, change some things just right there adjacent in our park, so we may have to revisit that again, but at least we're on it, so just in case you see it or hear about it, you can pass that along. And then the final two things, a suggestion was made to me that we do our Students of the Month, and some of the families are not getting the message on if, that they get the free pool pass and like where they get it, and that, you know, it's, your name's just on the roster at the pool, so we're going to go ahead and do a, just a little informational card that we'll also attach to that, both in Spanish and English, just so people will know what the skinny is with that. And the last thing is, we have, as you know, we do our mini-grants for the year, and we had one additional grant application come in, which was for the high school peace garden, and Mauricio Sosa is the person that put that together, so I worked with our subcommittee again, and we agreed on a dollar amount to pass along to him. He's trying to raise, I believe the number's $22,000, all told, and we contributed $1,000 towards that effort, and I thought that I would have him come in and just do a quick presentation to you all at some point, so you can learn more about the peace garden, and he's a really well-spoken and neat kid, so that's it.
Thank you. Does anybody have, yes?
I was just curious about the water park, what the status is.
Like the whitewater park? Sure, so we have a joint meeting scheduled between this council and the Pickens County Commissioners on the 24th of May, it's one of our regular meetings, I think that's when it falls, and it would be to basically go over the plan that's been amended from the plan that you all saw a few years ago. We did have a meeting with a subcommittee, so we had Jennifer and Oden from our group, and then it was Georgia and Rachel?
Uh, not Rachel. Patty.
Was it Patty? Okay, so George and Patty from the county commissioners, and so they unveiled sort of two different plans, and based on feedback from that group, from law enforcement and fire department, and then the stakeholders, they're sort of melding the two into a final plan for review and presumably ratification by you all, so.
Okay.
Anything else? No? Okay, thank you, Ryan.
Our next item is a public hearing in consideration of a transfer of a retail marijuana license and also a transfer of a medical marijuana license and the 174 Midland.
Is anybody recusing today, or?
No, I'm abstaining.
Just abstaining, okay. So, Peter, is that yours? Okay.
Me.
And do I need to open the public hearing now, or the normal? Right, okay, okay.
I'll make probably a few opening comments, and then we can turn it over to the applicant if they have any comments.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you like to introduce yourselves?
Sure, I have a whole thing if you'd like me to say it, but I will have to introduce myself. My name is Lauren Maithen, I'm an attorney, I represent Neat Things LLC and Jack Peas. I have a law firm named Edson and Maithen up in Aspen and in Denver. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Okay.
So council received the memo in the packet concerning the application, and this is a transfer only of an application from Neat Things LLC, previously from the Claysons, now into Jack Peas's name, and this would be a transfer of two licenses, a medical marijuana license and a recreational retail license. Council must make a finding and determination as to the good moral character of the applicant's. Good moral character is noted in that paragraph 6127b3 on the memo. An individual has a personal history demonstrating honesty, fairness, and respect for the right of others and for the law. In our background investigation and fingerprinting of Jack Peas, we have not come up with anything negative of the gentleman, he's come through with everything we have asked during this application process. The town council shall consider the facts and evidence adduced as a result of its investigation, and the investigation basically has shown, or council can find through staff's investigation, that previously the planning and zoning commission and council have approved the medical and retail locations for these licenses, and the town council has authority to refuse to issue any license for good cause, subject to judicial review, we can, again, find no reason to deny the license for good cause. The applicant has been submitted to, the application has been submitted to the police department, the planning department, the building department, the fire department, and through the town clerk's office. Our findings are listed all through the memo, if anybody has any questions about those, I can go through them, but basically at this point, we are recommending conditional approval based on all of these conditions through here. Jack Peas has been verified as a resident and registered voter of the zip code 81601 as required by our code, section 6-124c of our marijuana code, and at this point, I will turn it over to the applicant to see if they have any comments or arguments they would like to make in favor of this transfer only. It's not a zoning action or anything at this point, that's already all been decided, but a simple transfer of the applications that are already in existence.
Thank you. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here. Good evening, council, Mayor Whitsett. I thought it would be helpful if I could tell you a little bit about Mr. Peas. He is becoming one of your businesses in the valley, he's one of our residents in the Rainford Valley. I think it would be helpful if you understood a little bit about Mr. Peas. Jack Peas is a wonderful man, a recent resident of our valley, and living in this valley was a dream that he and his now-wife shared together, and as most of you may know, this is Jack's second or maybe third attempt at putting a business, marijuana business, in the Three Bears Building. Today's request is not about whether there should be a medical or retail business, it's simply about the transferring of that conditional license. Mr. Peas is excited about being in Rainford Valley, living and working. Since we began the process with Basalt, Mr. Peas has worked diligently to become licensed. He purchased a home in the valley, and his business plan includes the hiring of local residents and the utilization of local services. Additionally, it is important that council be comfortable in the transfer to Mr. Peas. He's extremely responsible and a meticulous owner. He stringently cares about local and state rules and regulations he is required to follow. Neither Mr. Peas nor any of his employees at any of his marijuana establishments has been subject to either a local or even a state violation. You couldn't ask for a better owner to be in your valley, you couldn't ask for a more liable member of our community. Jack has integrity, Jack has pride, he is loyal, he is honorable. The reason Mr. Peas is in the marijuana business is in his 70s is because his widow, the love of his life, was diagnosed with cancer. Determined to help extend his wife's life despite the terminal diagnosis, Jack dove headfirst into the medical marijuana business. He was able to do the business better than others, and he was able to provide better medicine than others. Jack was successful. Jack's wife died a year and seven days ago, seven years after cancer gave his wife a death sentence. So Jack carries on delivering a good product to good people. As for the sales and security in construction, Mr. Peas is diligently working with the Basalt Police and Fire Departments, as well as the Planning Department, to ensure the businesses are able to obtain certificates of occupancy without delay, and we believe he will be open by May 1st. Finally, Mr. Peas would like to invite council, Mayor Whitsett, and any other city employees to join him on a walkthrough of his business on April 23rd, I heard that's not the date you have meetings, April 23rd from 10 to 12, and if for any reason that time is not convenient for any of you, please just call Jack, settle it, and maybe he'd be happy to have you. On behalf of Neat Things LLC, Jack Peas and Jack Peas, we request this council approve the medical and retail license transfers requested for 174 Midland, units 101 and 102.
Thank you very much. Did you have anything, Mr. Peas?
So, do I need to, can I open these both?
Yes, please, at the same time, yes.
So this is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing on both the retail and the medical marijuana licenses transfer at 6:25. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment regarding this application? If you do, please come up to the microphone and state your name. Deafening silence, okay. We'll close the public hearing, and can we just go to council now, like a normal, okay.
Yes, Mark.
I just noticed the date was May 9th, is that, is that just a typo?
Yes, yes. I apologize, yes, I was probably using that as a delay from my previous approvals.
Well, I'm ready to make a motion. The town council approve the transfer of a retail recreational marijuana store license at 174 Midland, unit 101.
Is there a second?
Do you have to do them separately?
I think we should do them separately.
Request that, please.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, I forgot that other option, thank you.
And then, I'll go ahead and, I believe that the town council approve the transfer of a medical marijuana store license at 174 Midland, unit 101. Second?
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
So will somebody remind us about this date that...
Yes.
We have two of them. Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thanks for being here, Jack.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, our next item is resolution 5 of 2018, a resolution of the town authorizing town staff to enter into a professional services agreement with Myers &amp; Company to fabricate and install the Basalt Avenue entrance sign on the south side of Highway 82 Basalt. Watkins?
Good evening.
Good evening. Watkins, I was making faces at you, you were just ignoring me.
I thought you were making faces, it's the person behind me. I'll take faces, though. So this project is an entry line to our southside neighborhoods, and this is the culmination of a process that's gone on for a few years now. Back in 2014, our PMZ identified putting an entry marker of some sort as one of their priorities for Basalt's growth, and since then, our sign committee has been working diligently on it, and I should note, we have members of the sign committee here tonight. And so they've been directing us as we've gone, they've approved the designs that we've had, as have you all. In 2017, last year, you all approved the process to call for bids for designs, and then we did that, and then you all also approved at the end of the year the design that was selected by the sign committee. And so we put the project out to bid in March, and we got two bids for it. I should note, this is where it is generally going to be also, in between Codyway and Basalt Avenue and the highway, might be a little hard to see. And I forgot to mention, this is what Basalt's going to look like, you might want to know that. So we received two bids for it, and the low bid is one of our local companies, actually a southside company, Myers &amp; Company, and it came in about $10,000 under what was budgeted for it, so we're happy about that. And I don't really have any more information for you than what's in the packet, but I'll be happy to take questions.
Now, did you have anything that you wanted to say?
I am thrilled that Myers &amp; Company do so, to do the, I really think it's fabulous, and we're both heart and deck in it, you know.
Exactly. Go ahead.
Is that just the sign, or is that the whole thing, excavation, foundation?
The town is willing to do some of the excavation for them, but it does include the installation of it, so pouring the foundation, and obviously the creating, fabricating the sign.
Okay. And I know it's kind of a late hour, but I saw a communication from a citizen just inquiring as to if it was possible to include the high school on the sign, to say, to mark this where the high school is, I know we've been talking at this for a long time, I'm just saying, and also that is the southside residential area, but it does say southside, so. So I wondered if that had been talked about, if the origin of this, or why it was decided not to include the high school on there?
Okay. We had, gosh, how many meetings, James? Everybody over there, every stakeholder was invited.
Including the high school.
Including the high school, yeah. And the high school chap, I can't remember his name, came through and said, "This looks fine to me," and never came back to another meeting. Now, the next stage over there is for the southside, all, that whole community to get together and do a directory, where everybody will be on it, but you couldn't put all those different things on, this is an entrance sign, you know.
I think it's lovely, I'm just passing on the comments.
I'm curious, you know, because we just had so many days, and we finally got it together, and it was wonderful, so.
I think it looks great. Okay. Council, any comments, questions?
And I have one, Mark, you were asking if that was the fact, that this $35,000 does not include the landscaping lighting.
But it does include the concrete base.
And Catherine Markle was agreeing to do the landscaping design gratis, and so we're, we're all in line.
This is wonderful. When will it be actually grand opened?
The plan, and obviously a little bit weather-dependent, would be for it to be completed in kind of mid-July.
Great, okay, maybe we'll have a little party out there where we...
May?
Whatever. Well, thank you so much for all of your work on this, Lynn, and Watkins.
All these guys have been phenomenal, so.
Right, okay. Thank you. Anybody want to make a motion?
I remember when we were looking at this last, there were many comments from council, and I'm trying to remember, I think that there was a common comment, definitely it was the budget of, "We want it to be less," and we have met that. There was also the comment of the scale, there were multiple counselors that commented, I remember it, but we don't have the notes from that included in this packet, regarding reducing the scale of it some.
But council did vote on this particular design.
But we need comments as well, and I'm going to repeat the comment, that I feel that the scale is a little bit out of proportion.
What is the size again?
So it's about 18 feet horizontally and about eight feet tall at the highest point.
So there's an image in here that shows like a human standing next to it. And I just want to reiterate that.
Okay. Well, I do remember that this has been before us before, and I'm assuming that that's, this is where we're at on this. Anybody, anybody else? No?
I definitely remember the budget, I think it's still a big number.
Mm-hmm, it's a big chunk. Um...
Hold on, the town council about resolution number 5, series of 2018.
Second? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Thank you, thank you for all your work on this.
We all started clapping. Well done! It has to be, we're starting a new party.
Start planning the party, which of you is? Okay, our next item is public hearing. Are we okay? Karen?
Yeah.
We're, 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 we're,
review approval for the development of residential buildings in the industrial zone district at 11 Durox Lane Basalt. Application, Sarah?
Thank you. So, yeah, my name is Sarah Delvey, and sitting at the table here today is the project representative, Jeff Orsak. And the applicant is also, right here behind me, is Red Cunningham. So this...
Oh, Red.
This is an application for council to consider special review and site plan review at 11 Durox Lane at first reading. The subject property is located at the corner of Willet's Lane and Durox Lane, so right here in the yellow, and here is the long Willet's Lane. It is the first property that's at the entry to the Basalt Industrial Park. There are two buildings located on the site. This larger one is the main business for Home Hoppers Restoration LLC, which is Mr. Cunningham's business, and there is a smaller building on the site that is used as storage for the business. So the applicant is proposing the addition of three residential units to the larger building on the site, and residential is prohibited use within the industrial zone district through special review. This does require a significant remodel to the existing building. Again, here's the, the existing larger building, and here are some architectural renderings showing the proposed building. It would require, yours is basically the same footprint, there is a very minor increase here at the, this edge on the ground level of 275 square feet, that would be commercial use only. It is, it does require the addition of the second story, and they are proposing two, two two-bedroom units that measure about 1,040 square feet, and one one-bedroom unit at 580 square feet. I think it's an idea I'm familiar with the neighborhood, but to show you some context in the neighborhood, we have primarily one-story buildings that are low, flat-roofed buildings. There is, you know, a bit of industrial or light industrial commercial traffic around the area. This is directly across the street, this is the lumberyard that's directly on the other side of Durox Lane, and they also bought Willet's Lane as well. One of the topics that's under special review is requiring children in the units. The code generally does prohibit children from residing in units in the industrial zone district, unless it can be found that the users in the area and the site don't pose a significant hazard or safety hazard or health to the children, and if there is an appropriate play area provided. You see, the, then the neighborhood, it's primarily a lot of, you know, trucks and traffic, and also paved, and so staff has recommended and continues to recommend that children under the age of 16 be restricted from residing in the units. This decision was discussed thoroughly and also upheld by P&amp;Z at the former hearing. So the applicant is exempt from inclusionary housing requirements that would be associated typically with the addition of the residential units, and this is because the code exempts mixed-use developments that create three or fewer residential units that measure less than 1,400 square feet per unit, so they are exempt from that provision. The proposed development doesn't meet all the dimensional requirements for the zone district. Again, as we said earlier, they're proposing this two-story development, it's got a shed-style roof, it fits the context of the buildings found in the area. So, one of the parking and access, it's a little unique for this lot. The applicant is required to provide five onsite parking spaces associated with the commercial use, and six spaces for the proposed residential uses. So, the applicant is actually providing more parking than necessary for the site, they're providing 13 spaces rather than the 11 spaces. These six spaces are proposed for the residential units, and they are proposed to be accessed at the rear of the site. So here we have neighboring Lot 3, this is Lot 4 here, the subject site. What they would do to access these residential units is come around to, access onto the Lot 3 property, and park for the residential units separately than the, the parking for the industrial commercial use. So in order to, this condition to be allowed, the applicant has submitted a letter from this adjacent property owner indicating an agreement in place to allow the users to drive onto the site to access these parking spaces. This also allows for the secondary egress, or ingress, egress to the property through Lot 3 onto Lot 4. And as a condition, these, an easement would be required to be recorded in conjunction with the filing of the final site plan. So we have the two access points here to get here onto the property. This is the existing one, it is gated, and that is something that the fire department has found this, so long as a knock box is, is provided to allow access for emergency services to the site. So, the proposed document is consistent with the future land use map is, which is industrial, as well as the master plan. This proposal does provide infill housing, it encourages compact development close to commercial spaces, it has that live-work potential that is important in the master plan, and it also provides for local resident housing. These are rental units, they cannot be condominiumized or sold off separately from the property. So as a condition, staff is seeking to memorialize an informal agreement that we understand is in place between the Durox family and the former property owner. And that is to, I failed on, oh, I'm sorry, this is actually, I wanted to show you, this is actually the subject property here, and lots over here, and this is where they would pull on to, for that access easement, onto the parking spaces on the Lot 4. And I failed to put a picture of Durox Park there, but it is a small park that is on the corner here, it's an existing pocket park. And again, we've kind of understood that there was an agreement with the past property owner that, that owner would, as needed, water the plants, there's some plants in that bench on this park site. So, we're looking to memorialize agreements, and as a condition of the application, we've asked to allow Public Works to draw up the progress needed, we've asked for access to the site and use of the applicant's hose bib, and we're a reduction in the pipeline dedication improvement fees. And this was also something that we discussed with the applicant and discussed with P&amp;Z, and it was supported by the commission to have some reduction in those fees. Further conditions, we've included language in each rental lease disclosing the preexistence of industrial uses, that could be noise, odor, light, typical things that you would find in industrial area, and to make those potential tenants aware of these conditions prior to their residency there. And we've also created a condition to, of course, requiring the satisfaction of the referral comments that were provided by fire, building department, as well as the Mid Valley Metro District, they did not know any, any significance, concerns with this application. Players on the commission did provide a unanimous recommendation of approval, including all the conditions that staff has in the memo. And so we are, at this time, are asking, staff's asking council to approve the ordinance number six upon first reading, and I can take any questions you may have at this time.
I think if, if the applicant doesn't have anything to add, we might do the public hearing first. This is public hearing, I believe. Did you have anything to add?
I'll give a little presentation.
Okay.
I'll read, I think it'll kind of pick up some of the things you missed.
Yeah, we have, going through your part next, and then we can do the public hearing. That way the public has an opportunity to hear everything before they comment.
Sounds great. Thank you, thank you, James. Thanks, Sarah. Thanks for giving us a turn. My name's Jeff Orsak, I work with Lipton Warner, and we're representing Red Cunningham and helpers tonight, this is Red back here. So, kind of, some of these goals with this project is, is people are willing to kind of help him have the option to kind of clear up the site, and kind of, you know, making this place his home since he purchased it a few years back, and we're kind of making it his own now. And the other thing is to kind of create that opportunity for housing for his employees on his site and within his bubble. So, like Sarah said, here's the parcel, a Willet's Lane, Durox right here, we're talking about this corner. This is a view from the south west of Willet's Lane. This is the building we're talking about, we're going to, talking about taking the top off, putting the units above with the shared roof, cleaning up the buildings around it, cleaning up the site a little bit. This is a view from north west, this is that access point we were talking about, we'll get into that a little bit more in a second. Here's a portion of that park, Sarah was talking about here, and we're looking at this from the northeast, Willet's Lane, looking back, not a, it's a zero escape park, so not a lot of water we're talking about, not a lot of grass, but these bushes could use some help, so we're hoping to provide that.
Life support.
So, this is what the state office exists now, here are the two buildings, this is the building we're talking about, we're talking about removing a set of stairs here, popping this top, and putting three units above. And to talk a little bit more about the access, one of the things we understand is that kind of this, and another thing, as you talked about a lot, was the relationship of industrial to residential. How do you manage that? How do you manage that in a positive way? While this is a super light industrial, you know, Red's business, the way it works now is it's kind of a storage place for his guys to maybe pick up their equipment, go to the sites that they need to do, so lots of fans, and it's just being stored in this place. That's what's really going on there. But still, this is an industrial zone district, how do you manage that? So, so what we've decided is to kind of split the two, by kind of create, pulling this fence off that's back here, moving it back to the building, including all the access to the residential above on the north side, and then all the access to the industrial on the south side. And this really helps so that, you know, you've got, these people are kind of coming and going, but they're not coming and going on top of each other. They're, they're overlap, but they're separated. So that's the idea there. And then we talk about kind of the land use patterns in the, in the area, as you can see, all these other sites are kind of working the same way, where these buildings are being serviced off of these shared drives. When this parcel at the end could use a land service off there, but it kind of makes sense to kind of follow that same pattern that's happening elsewhere. And so that's why we've kind of been working on introducing an agreement with the neighbor to do that, and, you know, she gets some help with her asphalt, she gets, you know, that fence going away that's right up against it, so there's some good give and take. Oops, sorry. So while we're throwing, it's two, two bedrooms, one, one bedroom, not substantial size, appropriate size for a neighbor, we're not looking to kind of make palatial locations here, and it's not a location for that, given it's, given what's around it. This is a view, once again, from Willet's Lane in the southeast quarter, we said shed roof, opening these units to the south, to the views to the south, kind of kind of trade and current as a positive environmental relationship with the river for these folks that are kind of living in this, in this new area. As you can see, we've kind of pulled that fence back, like I talked about, here's that parking, the shared access, this is far more inviting for the neighbor, as well as for the residents that are going to live here. This is once again looking from Willet's Lane, there's the access to the residential, there's the secondary access we're talking about into this driveline, once again, the roof's on the first line is the same, we're not, we're not raising the building, we're just kind of changing its look. This is from Willet's Lane. This is the building, this is the new building. I think that's it, that's what I thought. So, my questions are happy to answer them, we hope.
Well, this is public hearing, unless I'm wrong about that, and so we're opening a public hearing at 6:52. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment regarding this application? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and go to council for either questions of the applicant, or discussion amongst ourselves, et cetera. Katie, you have a look.
Um, well, yeah, there's two things that popped up with the P&amp;Z that we have to contemplate, and that's kids and fees.
So, so Katie, we've, we've, there was a lot of back and forth, a lot of good conversation, debate kind of about land use patterns, you know, what's right, what's wrong, what's the advantage, disadvantage, and I think we all kind of were, were not sure the way, but we came down to the fact that we're, we're, the applicant's open to, or is, is okay with not allowing kids. We think that's the best approach at this ti, this time. Keeps a lot less stress around from everybody's standpoint, from Red, the owner, is it, you know, if the kid's running around his site, he doesn't want that, and from you guys, the town, that, you know, you've got this kind of rub, so we're open to that.
So, what's being proposed is under 16, or 16 and under, but code is 18? Or is code 16?
Um, I believe that we did, the town was said to park it from the code to do 16 over 18, and the rationale behind that is that at age 16, you're a bit more mobile, maybe a bit more responsible, able to maybe, you know, they can hang you out in, you know, the parking lots adjacent, most likely you're going to be, you know, the parks are off with your friends, you might have access to a vehicle. It's, it's just a bit of more mobility that you have at that, at that age, and so we felt that that might be more appropriate.
Okay. And then we'll talk about fees, and the proposed reduction to parking fees. James, I did not bring that, did you happen to have that?
I am sorry that I did bring that information. So, I can sneak back here for a minute.
Okay.
So, what we did in terms of looking at credit for the fees is we looked at the general size of Durox Park there, and kind of figured out the size, and went to the Mid Valley Metro District's fee schedule, and, because Mid Valley Metro is the one that serves these properties over in West Basalt, and their fee schedule indicates that about 3,500 square foot of irrigated space is allowed per an EQR equivalent rating. And so, the Durox Park area was slightly over the 3,500 square foot, and so they equate that to about $5,300 per a tap for 3,500 square feet. So roughly, we, we took that, and, and, you know, based on the size of the park, it was slightly over that $5,300.
So they're being relieved of $5,300 in fees?
Yeah.
And would they, they're being that, James?
Because we're projecting the water use into the future.
It's based on the size of the park and how much Mid Valley requires for use of water, $5,300.
And we're contemplating relieving that fee because they're going to provide, or they're going to pay for the water to water the three bushes?
Yeah.
They're still there than that. I'm sorry, didn't bring a, a good picture of the park, but there's...
There's a large area, there's not a ton more, but there's some, there's square footage, and I will run either a tap over that they can access easily, or until I do that, I'll make a hose available that'll have, that I'll have turned on, that they'll be able to just do without going inside the fence.
Okay.
Because I'm not expecting this to happen overnight, but I'll, I'll make water available immediately.
Okay. I appreciate that. I'm definitely tentative about reducing or eliminating fees, and then as for kids, I'm pretty indifferent to that, if it seems that the applicant is willing to drop it to 16, that seems fine, but ultimately, it's about parents watching their kids in a pretty hazardous area. Those are all my comments.
Thank you. Katie?
Jennifer? Who owns Durox Park? The town owns that land?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And has Public Works been maintaining it?
There is some question on that whole area, and I think that there is some history with possibly a past property owner, and an expectation that Mr. Cunningham wasn't quite aware of, and it was brought to our attention by the Durox family, and so we're trying to just kind of get that sorted out, and find an agreeable solution that, that will keep that park healthy and able to be used.
Okay.
Good, Gary?
On that, I would say, before second reading, if we could get a little update on the park, like what are the plans for the park? You can see, because, I mean, to get that much of a, you know, in the packet, it says just being able to access a hose bib, but if you're actually providing water to the site outside of your site, that's something different. So if we could clarify that before second reading?
Sure.
That would help me understand why we reduce fees by a significant amount, and what we're getting for those reductions. And so on kids, I personally would not want to see young kids running around an industrial site. Yes, it is your parents, but even the best parents have problems controlling little kids sometimes, so... sometimes, so, for sixteen, if you're willing to live with that, I think, to me, it's, it's a better, and that's why we put it in the code originally, because there's no parks really around there, and young kids, it'd take a lot to get to a park, so at sixteen, you're pretty mobile, and you can go find yourself a park, or someplace else, too. Yeah. Play.
Yeah, Joe?
On the, the concept of, of the sixteen and over, I'm, as well like Katie, indifferent, and also receptive to children residing at the residence. Enforcement by the town can be difficult at times. And as well, reading the PNC notes, I do agree with Chair Marin, that it's not up to government to decide where children live or not. I grew up with a machine shop in my house, and it's, I'm really grateful that I did, because I learned a lot about how to be safe, and what tools do, et cetera. Great law, love, work, opportunity. As well as the opportunity for, there's no stipulation that this cannot be short-term rental. And that's very difficult to manage, short-term rentals, to exclude children. So with that concept in mind of this building, whenever it exchanges hands, or however, every single day, that's another point that I'd like to bring up. The third one is the fees. Regarding the, the school assessment, because of the sixteen or under, I'd like to propose that there still are children that will be attending, or there are still humans, children are not, that will be attending from age sixteen to eighteen, the school district. So therefore, the entirety of the school fees being waived, I'm not fully in agreement, and I'd like on second reading to see a, a portion, a ratio, if, if school is thirteen years, and there's three of the thirteen years remaining, then, just like the parkland fee, and it was figured out with the Metro District, we can come up with something like that, as well for the school district.
Okay, thanks. The other thing I had was, because I didn't read, the parking is in agreement, is that in perpetuity? Is that forever? Oh.
We're going to finalize it after I can speak down.
Okay.
Sunny is who owns next door, was ecstatic when I brought this door, she goes, "I'll do anything to get rid of that fence."
Okay.
So, she was ecstatic, and they'll have.
We won't run the plan, that's part of the condition.
That's great, because if we've seen anything here, it's, don't make decisions based on the people in the seats today. Because they all change, and the next people hate each other, and they don't want to live with the agreement, and so we just know that that, that has got to be concrete. Okay, does anybody else have anything, or is there a motion? Everybody's so excited.
Um, the town council approved ordinance number six, series of two thousand and eighteen, on first reading, and continue and set public hearing in second reading for April twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you, Catherine. For second. Further discussion? All favor? Hi. First. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Personally, this is my stopping grounds, I look forward. Okay, next item is public hearing, first reading of ordinance seven. An ordinance said the town approving amendments to the Basalt Vista Affordable Housing Project on the Basalt High School property. James?
Well, hello there. Hi, how are you?
I'm doing well. Go ahead.
Just to introduce my applicants here, the second one first, we've got Phyllis Matisse from Picken County, and behind me, we've got Dana, and Scott Gilbert from Habitat for Humanity, and Lucas Pack in the back. And, so, this is a public hearing, and requiring an ordinance that would approve of amendments to the Basalt Vista Affordable Housing Project, that was issued in twenty seventeen, pursuant to ordinance twenty-five, series of twenty seventeen. As background, the approvals that were granted are for the construction of twenty-seven deed restricted employee housing units, and they were approved for staff of Basalt High School, in this area behind the high school. And the applicant group, as I indicated, is a combination of Picken County, Our Land School District, and Habitat for Humanity. We've got a board, just kind of as a reminder, the site plan was approved for the twenty-seven units, as well as some visuals showing what the project looked like as part of the approval. The request of the units that the applicants have, the first is a request for the twelve Picken County units to abide by the Aspen-Picken County Housing Authority requirements for retirees in occupying employee housing units. This is a warrant request because the original application that was approved in twenty seventeen represented the individuals that would retire from their employment, would be required to sell their units, and not remain in units. The Aspen-Picken County APSHA requirements that are being requested for retirees are that they are to their own units upon retiring, as long as they occupy the units as their primary residence, and own no other property in the valley. The Basalt affordable community housing, Colonel Bach reviewed the requests, and actually recommended requiring the town's retiree permits, that require a retiree, retire from their employment, to volunteer a certain number of hours to stay in a community housing unit. Bach thought that the retirement number of hours for volunteering in the town's guidelines was a bit high, so they've actually recommended a reduced kind of scale in terms of volunteer hours. And that scale is in the draft ordinance. They've suggested that it be required for an individual to volunteer five hundred hours per year, if they're between sixty-five and seventy years of age, and then reduce it down to two hundred and fifty hours per year, for individuals of seventy-one to seventy-five years of age. So staff has included the two options in the draft ordinance. Option one, the ordinance identifies the town retiree requirement that Bach recommended. And then, option two, for council's consideration in the draft ordinance, would be the APSHA retiree guidelines that Picken County and the applicants are requesting. So that's a discussion item for the council as part of this review. The first four requests are related to cleanup items, the way staff looks at them. The first has a change to the timing of the deed restrictions to be provided. Basically, the current requirement in the approvals is that they would execute the deed restrictions with the rest of the approval documents, within a hundred and eighty days of their approval. What is proposed is a change in the timing, so that they would prepare the draft deed restrictions within that timeframe, but then not execute the actual draft deed restriction until prior to a first building permit in the development. And that's to kind of give them a bit of flexibility in terms of adjustments that might have to be made, given that we've got three kind of different applicant groups that are part of this development. The second, the request files a warranty on an error, you know, the water tap fee waiver that was granted, should be approximately a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, instead of the hundred and twenty thousand that was in ordinance number twenty-five. The applicant can explain the error a bit more as part of their comments, but essentially, they removed the surcharges instead of including them in the original application amount, so for the waiver.
Very interesting trick.
Well, the question I have is, I remember a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar discussion at that time, because we were talking about how we were going to pay for that, and that's, how did it turn into one-twenty-nine when we were talking about one-fifty-nine?
Well, we can have the applicant talk about that, but.
So, yeah, there was just, approving it at one-fifty-nine.
Anyway.
So anyway.
Onward.
Okay. And the final one is a request to clarify that the applicants are able to use the three hundred and fifty gallons of potable water that were provided for the high school property originally, as part of that water service agreement, to do irrigation on the Basalt Vista Project, from the time May to October, which are the normal irrigation times, without additional tap fees. So those are the requests, as I said, I think the last three are primarily cleanup items that we're requesting of the council. And then, the first one is maybe a more significant discussion about the retiree provisions. So staff would suggest taking applicant comments, Phyllis has some comments for you, and then taking public comments, and providing council discussion.
Hi, Phyllis.
Hi. So Phyllis Matisse, Assistant County Manager for Picken County. And we're excited to be in this project, and the partnership that's happening. When I looked at the document, it was originally proposed that no one could retire in these units. Since Picken County is opting to use APSHA's guidelines to qualify people for the county units, it was, it was a deviation to do something different in the retirement. So our request is to use APSHA's guidelines, so we're consistent all the way through with the units that were following APSHA's guidelines. When we look at the comparison, there's an age difference on retirement compared to APSHA, which depends on the social security ages currently. So if you're in nineteen fifty-three, you retire at sixty-six, not sixty-five. Basalt has one age, so that would be something different, that APSHA would have to deal with that. Also, well, how many years it's living in and working for four years versus the ten years in the Basalts. Although, I do believe APSHA's considering extending that. And if they do, the guideline would be changed, and so anyone who would own it, it would be the guideline as it's amended from time to time, so if while someone's in there, it's amended to be eight years, six years, ten years, that would be what would apply to those people. It's also very specific that people can't own property in the exclusion area, which is the entire valley. So someone couldn't own a second home in Glenwood Springs, and be a retiree, which sometimes is a problem for APSHA, people who are looking to retire, because maybe they want to buy something somewhere to retire to in the valley, but they can't, because you can't own property. But that's just another piece that APSHA takes into consideration when they're reviewing this, that would be totally different if they went with the Basalt guidelines. So that's kind of the basis of our request, we think it's just a consistency and simplicity for APSHA to go with their other two thousand units that they manage, and they will manage these all for us.
Okay. Thanks, Phyllis. Okay, is that all for?
That's all for the retirement piece.
All righty, then, this is also a public hearing, we'll open the public hearing at seven-twelve. Is there anyone in the public who would like to make a comment regarding this change? This requested change? Okay, here now, close the public comment, and go to council.
Well, I agree with Phyllis on the retirement thing, I don't see making retirees go do two hundred and fifty hours of community service after working fifty years of their life here in the valley. We have a master meter over there, James, to read how many gallons we've used.
There is a master meter, I believe, and Dana can clarify, but I think there would have to be additional meters installed.
Just so we know, hit the three hundred and fifty thousand gallon mark.
Right, yeah, the proposal is for the irrigation system to cover both the homes and all the common areas, and so we all manage by the HOA, all managed off of one meter and one service connection, so we can track that pretty readily.
Okay, I agree with Gary, I thought it was a hundred and fifty-nine originally as well, but.
I'm happy to explain, it was really just a, on my part, for lack of a better word than.
Oh, yeah. More than it.
Sure.
It was just an error in my Excel spreadsheet, so essentially, if you take a hundred and forty thousand for the tap fee, plus the eighteen-nine for the surcharge, the formula worked out, because I was trying to show it as kind of a negative, a swap clause, and so essentially, ended up eighteen thousand nine hundred times two off, which equals one hundred and twenty-one thousand, so it was really just a fluke, an error, so.
Those computers, they're always screwing up.
I tell you.
Thank you, Dana. Anybody else?
Thank you for, thank you for correcting an error. I do stand beside, excuse me, the Basalt Affordable Community Housing. I do, I sit in that committee, and a lot of thought has gone into it, and I, I am curious to see where the valley is going, and where APSHA is going, because it has been a very talked about subject. How, what, what do, what does the retirement community look like? Where do we provide affordable housing? And having that cusp. So Phyllis, I do, I'm a bit indifferent of being able to tag along with APSHA, greatly appreciate the managing and qualifying of the tenants, and respect the, the complexity of it. And on the other hand, that's part of the reality of Basalt, is we live in two counties, Eagle County and Picken County, and we're constantly following different rules for everything. It's like having divorced parents. And, you can go ask mom, or you can go ask dad, and the rules are different in each of the houses. So, that's part of the future of, I, I love collaborating with Picken County, and, yeah, so that's my comment, is I do, I could go either way, but I do, I do respect the BAC, that there is a value to volunteering, and continuing, living in a tax subsidized housing, and giving back to the community, continuing to.
Katie?
Um, I agree, that I want to honor BAC, because they are our community group that puts so much time and effort into our housing regulations. But I also feel that you have a significantly valid point on consistency, and that APSHA's ultimately going to be managing these units. So, for consistency's sake, being that APSHA's the one that manages these units, I think that moving with APSHA's recent regulations is fitting for this particular project. Two and three I'm fine with. As for four, three hundred and fifty thousand gallons of potable water used for irrigation, being that you are a different entity outside of Basalt, and being a school district, you operate differently. If there were ever regulations, which are inevitable, that we are going to have to conserve water, how would this, this collaboration alter the need to reduce potable water, or any water for irrigation?
It's an interesting question, I think one that we're probably not prepared to quite answer. I'd want to speak with our landscape architect, to try to understand how that might impact, you know, the viability of landscaping on site. I think if, in three or four hours, there's watering regulations such that the south side only can water on Tuesday, Wednesday, Saturday, and the north side of the town only waters Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I'm sure once things are established, we could certainly cut back on that, and take part, just like the rest of the town does. Whether or not we would then write that into our HOA regulations, I'm not sure how that would be committed to, so I can't quite speak for the HOA in the future, but it seems reasonable, once the landscaping's established, that we could comply with something like that.
Okay. I mean, it'd be great if we could somehow, because this is first reading, so we'll have a second reading, if we could have more information coming back on that, because it would just be, to use a strong word, unacceptable, that the school would have all this water while the rest of us are doing what's right, and that is conserving water.
Sure, and our, our long-term goal, and our kind of initial aspiration, was always to use non-potable and the ditch water to irrigate all this landscaping. We certainly don't like that number either, but it just hasn't been practical to coordinate with the ditch company, and get a good understanding of how we could do that. So, we agree with you, and I'll talk to Connect One, the landscape architect, and confirm that, once everything's established, we could comply with those same restrictions.
Thank you.
And I have a question along those same lines, and I'm sure somebody in this room knows, how many households, three hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water would serve us? Just houses without irrigation? James, Susan, somebody need something?
Not yours usually. An acre foot will feed like four houses in a year?
Yeah, just a desire.
And while he does that, I mean, I guess my, my issue is basically the same as Katie's, is that, I mean, we may see that year, this year. And honestly, I am not a big fan of throwing potable water on the ground, it's just not my deal, so.
Sure.
If there's something. If there's something that can be done about that by second reading, that'd be thrilling. As for, um, uh, APCHA, I am, uh, I am inclined to support going with consistency in the APCHA rules, personally. Um, I feel like these are Picken County priority units, and that, um, you, Picken County's been in this business a very long time, and I feel like I have, um, suffered some errors and corrected the course, and I just, um, not that I don't respect BAC, I just feel like this is, this is kind of their call on these particular units. Yeah.
Listen, I have a question, Karen, I have a question. Well, two different orders here, the county has twelve units, the school district has fifteen. The school district's retirees are each one, uh, require, require each one's charge, so some teacher has the, 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 they have to say, oh, no. So those fifteen are, are workforce hens, uh, the county has, has, uh, four of them as well, each one's charge, uh, the, the, so, 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 so,